Welcome to the Jefferson City News Tribune, Jefferson City Council Forum for candidates seeking the Ward Five position in the April 6th election. I'm Gary Castor, Managing Editor of the Jefferson City News Tribune. The forum is being conducted in a virtual format due to the pandemic. Prior to the forum, the candidates were given copies of the ground rules of the forum, which noted lengths of time given for opening and closing statements. Introduce today's candidates. Mark Schreiber is seeking the second and final term representing Ward Five. He's retired, but worked as an assistant for the Missouri State Penitentiary Director of Adult Institutions in the 1980s. He's been on the council since 2015. Alicia Edwards is running for her first term on the council. She's the Executive Director of Building Community Bridges, an entrepreneur who owns her own beauty salon, and she coordinates a weekly food pantry and worked on relief efforts after the 2019 tornado. As we prepare to get started, I'll note that candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement. As the forum progresses, each candidate will alternate answering the question first, and will have two minutes to respond to the question. At the conclusion of the forum, they will have two minutes for a closing statement. So let's begin. We have chosen our order based on the order on the ballot, so we'll start with Mark with his opening statement. Mark, you have two minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate it. My name is Mark Schreiber, and I lived in Jefferson City for about 67 years. I grew up in Jefferson City on the east side, went to moral high school, graduated from Jefferson City High School. I have an undergraduate degree in management and a master's degree in criminal justice. Served for 42 years in the criminal justice field and retired in 2010 as a deputy warden of operations at the Jefferson City Correctional Center. I have a wife, Debbie. We've been married for 43 years in May. We have three children and six grandchildren. So this is my third term, and I've thoroughly enjoyed serving the people of the city of Jefferson and communicating with them, attempting to answer their daily issues that they might have, and I look forward to hopefully assisting them in the future.
Okay, thank you. Alicia?
Hello, and thanks for allowing me to be here. My name is Alicia Edwards. I'm also a resident of Jefferson City. I was born in Columbia. I was adopted, and my foster mother raised me here and adopted me in middle school here in Jefferson City when I was a student at Lewis and Clark Middle School. I'm a mother of three. Me and my fiance, Douglas Wright, have started a nonprofit, which is Building Community Bridges, about four years ago, grassroots. And like you mentioned earlier, during the tornado, we were hands-on helping the community rebuild with their daily needs: food, shelter, clothing, hygiene items, and cleaning supplies and things like that. And that just bloomed into an everyday thing. So we have a food pantry, and we're always out front helping people. And that's what pushed me to run for city council this year, is because I believe that in order to help folks, you gotta have a voice in the seat that's making decisions for the city as well. So that was prompted me to run for city council in this year's election.
Very good. All right, so let's get started with the questions. Again, you'll have two minutes to respond. If I see that you're going to over two minutes, I will gently try to stop you, let you finish your statement, but it's pretty casual, so let's go forward. So Alicia, we'll start with you. What brought you to the decision to run, and what do you hope to accomplish if you're elected?
Like I was saying, what brought me to the decision is wanting to see change. Growing up here, I grew up in the low-income area of Jefferson City, and from a little girl into now, while I'm helping people in the same kind of conditions, not much has changed. So I believe that running for city council, that will be a voice for people like me that are on the lower end of things, to be able to have their voices heard. And things that need to be done within the community, they feel like their needs are being met on those levels as well. I believe that representation is very important, and that Jefferson City being as diverse as it is, I believe that we should have all levels of representation, whether it's color, whether it's gender, whether it's age. And I think that moving forward with everything going on in our society right now, what better time than now to push for change?
All right. Mark, same question.
My parents were both educators in the Jefferson City school system, and I was always taught that you had a responsibility, no matter what age you are, to serve your community. And so that was the impetus that made me run to begin with after I retired. I have a real concern for various issues within our community, including particularly senior citizens, people more my age. I think that some of the recent events, not only the tornado that occurred in 2019, but certainly the present situation we're in with the pandemic, what we've seen this winter in extreme cold, the need for additional resources, whether we bring various groups and entities together so that we can accomplish some of those things to help individuals. I'm also very concerned about the infrastructure in older neighborhoods. The area where I initially grew up was in the area of Hobbs Terrace and Ewing Drive and in that particular area, and then later Bald Hill Road, and then I moved up, then my wife and I moved up on Moral Drive. And so I think there's a real need to keep up older neighborhoods, because if they fail, then the community starts to fail, and it has a domino effect. So there are a lot of issues like that that I'm certainly concerned with, as well as economic opportunities to keep young people in the city of Jefferson, and also economic opportunities so that the city will grow. Because as we know, state government's becoming smaller rather than larger, and the days of the large factories are starting to dwindle, and I think that the future of our community to a significant degree is in the area of tourism and embracing that. So those are some of the concerns that I have.
All right, thank you. Next question, we'll start with you, Mark. What is going to be the biggest challenge you expect to face if you're elected to council again?
Well, there again, I think the biggest challenge are some of the day-to-day issues that do occur. And here again, there are so many, so many needs that people put forth. But we have to realize that the responsibility to meet those needs, it comes from all of us as citizens, and certainly we have to have the tax base that's necessary to get things accomplished. And that's true. We can't just say that, well, Mark Schreiber just be concerned with what's going on in Ward Five. This city is such that all of us have to be concerned about the entire city as a whole. One of the big issue, of course, is the issue of stormwater, the issue of aging infrastructure in our sewers. We can certainly see the condition of our streets, which is always going to be a problem when you have the winter like we've had and then the heat in the summer. High Street Vido is one as well. High Street Vido is a big issue that's going to cost millions of dollars. But the problem is, is that it's easy to say, yes, we're going to accomplish A, B, and C, but you have to have the funds to accomplish that, and those funds have to come from the taxpayer. We can't just say it comes from big government, because we are the government, and all the people are the government, regardless of what their economic status may be or whatever. So all of those things, I think, are a challenge, and they're going to continue to be a challenge as we go forward.
Okay. Alicia, same question.
Mark couldn't have said it better. Yes, those are very, those are very, those are challenges that we would definitely meet. I believe that funding and directing the money on where it needs to go is going to be one of the biggest challenges, because there's so many different things that need to happen. And so prioritizing those things and making sure the funding is directed in the right direction would be the biggest challenge, because we are a group of peers, so it's not one person gets to say on this. We all would have to agree. And making sure that we all agree is where the challenge will come into play. But I do believe that along with fixing the sewer systems and making sure that the neighborhoods are adequately met and up kept, housing is a big issue in Jefferson City, affordable housing as that. So that's another big thing that I would like to see pushed, is being able to have affordable housing that is not crumbling and falling apart. So making sure, changing the regulations on what the landlords are available to rent out to people would help, and maybe the different regulations with that as we move forward with the push with affordable housing.
All right, thank you. Next question, we'll start with you, Alicia. As a council member, what do you believe the biggest need will be in your ward and then across the entire city? What's your top priority for your ward and then for the city?
My top priority for the ward would be affordable housing. But I'm used to growing up on the rougher end of things, so I feel privileged to be in Ward Five at this moment, but we do have some areas in Ward Five that are eyesores and could get attended to, to bring up those qualities of those areas to the rest of the areas in Ward Five. I also live on Moral Drive, which is an historic district, and our street Mark and I live on is nice. So we would like, I would like, I'm sure he too, would like for every street in Ward Five to be as nice and as friendly as Moral Drive is. I also think that it is good for us to be more community-based when it comes to leadership in the community, with like the police force, the fire department. That more community engagement in the area is also, that's positive community engagement is needed.
Okay. Mark, same question.
I think community engagement certainly is important, and it's an up-and-down communication need. You know, sometimes we don't know what people really want if they don't let us know what they really want or what they expect. So I think certainly housing is an issue. I know my mother, who just passed away last November 11th, she was 96, lived in her house on Bald Hill until she was 94. But the thing that I realized was my mother was financially capable of living in a very nice retirement center when she moved, but there are many people that cannot. And some of the areas and some of the places that we have for citizens of all ages and economic, different backgrounds, some of the places that they live are indeed starting to fail, they're outdated, they don't meet a lot of the things that are necessary. So I know when my wife and I moved from Moral Drive to where we are now, that was the issue. We love the home, but she couldn't, she wasn't able to get up and down the stairs like she did at one time. So I think that those things are very, very important. I think that citizens need to address and let us know what's needed more. I'm certainly in favor of the body cameras for police officers. I think that's essential. It's going to cost a great deal of money, but I think that we have to do it. We have to do it for the benefit of not only police officers, but for the benefit of the public as well. And I think we have to come together as a community, and this, you know, this is going to here again be brought forth in some tax issues on the ballot later on, and it might fail, but it just isn't like there's some magic stash of money that we can pull out and accomplish these things. So it takes all of us working together to try to get it done. One thing I'd like to add is that I was disappointed that we weren't able to get the roundabout up on Clark and Dunkland. The reason being is when President Rome was president of Lincoln University and had some extensive conversations with him, and the purpose of the roundabout and the purpose of working on some of those other streets like Atchison up there by Common Ground and some of those places, the purpose was, is for the long-term benefit and long-term planning for Lincoln University, so Lincoln could expand. That area, the streets haven't been changed in 60 years that I've been living in that particular area. So I was disappointed that that didn't happen. It is what it is, have to move forward with what the decision of the council as a whole was, but there certainly was a lot of money spent there.
Right. So we'll circle back to Lincoln here in just a minute, but let's go on to our next question. We'll start with Mark with this one. With the council, with many members in the same chamber, they're often conflicting opinions on what the priorities for city government should be. So kind of give us an idea of what your specific steps would be to help you, to have you try to unite the community around measures that work for everyone?
Well, I think that, you know, one of the things that, of course, that's why we have 10 members on the council, is because they not only represent five different wards, but they all have differing opinions, you know, and different needs. But I think that one of the things that we need to do is we sit down and talk, and a great deal of what's accomplished in the city council as far as the needs of the city, that's accomplished outside the council chamber, whenever we have meetings like for Public Works or for Finance or whatever. So, you know, it's kind of bad if you spent $200,000 or $300,000 on a planning process like what was done for the Dunkland-Clark Avenue area, and then all of a sudden, then you get new members on the council, and those new members say, well, that really doesn't count for what happened before, this is what we're going to do now. Sadly, that's taxpayer money that's wasted right there, and I really hate to see that, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Alicia, same question.
Well, I'm a mom, and when my kids have a disagreement, I sit them down and we all discuss it, the good, the bad, and ugly, it all comes out on the table, and we work from there. And I think a lot of times we forget that we have to go back to those simple, basic rules, like everyone has a voice and everyone's voice deserves to get heard. So I would definitely be open to discussing anything prior to making it set in stone for the city. Everyone needs to be able to say yea or nay, and we come to an agreement on something. That's what we're supposed to do. Everyone's ideas and issues may not be met at that particular time, but I don't want to be in a position to make anyone feel like those issues are least important, but I definitely would push the prioritizing and making sure that things that are most important to the citizens of Jefferson City are handled first, other than the things that we just would like to see happening. I do believe that Jefferson City needs more, an economic boom in Ward Five and surrounding the Lincoln University area, because we get a lot of students that come here, they graduate. Jeff City has a tendency to be very cliquey, so they can't find jobs or there's nothing to do around the area. So with us all coming to the table to agree upon things, I definitely see in the future, Mark, all the things that you've worked on. If winning, I'm not the type to come and rewrite everything. You've spent plenty of time working hard on everything that you have done for the city council and with your career and your life in Jefferson City. My goal is never to rewrite what's already there, but to improve as we go into the future and build off of what is already there and is in process of being worked on.
Okay, all right. Next question, we'll start with Alicia. So this came from a reader. In 2013, Rand McNally judged Jefferson City to be a most beautiful small town in America, but today many of our buildings are in very dilapidated status, boarded up with porches crumbling, roofs tattered, broken brick walls. How should the city address these problems?
I think the city should join forces with the Housing Authority and find out ways to rehab, along with Habitat for Humanity, to rehab these structures, since we do have a housing shortage right now, to redo these structures and give them to the families that are in need of them. There's structures that could be businesses for small business owners, for young entrepreneurs. There's ways to tie in that development of those businesses with the universities. There's so many different ways for us to work together. There's different organizations with our citizens of Jefferson City to fix these structures. We can keep it all in-house, and we can keep it all local, and we can improve the looks of our city together as a team. But it takes that group effort, and it takes bringing that conversation up to get that ball rolling.
All right. Mark, same question.
I've always felt that it's important that we keep things up in our city. When I was Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, we were certainly, back in that day, not too well-liked with some of the ideas and things that we wanted to put forth. So we've actually come light years in the right direction. But when we talk about Jefferson City being one of the most beautiful small cities, I drive around Jefferson City almost every day, and when I see tires underneath a Vido or I see trash that's been thrown out that builds up, there again is the responsibility of all of us to help keep our city looking beautiful. You can drive down Industrial Drive, and the other day I saw where a box of all kinds of things had been thrown out right in front of U.S. Rinsit on the railroad side. You know, these things are very concerning, when property owners don't keep property up, when you see vehicles that are abandoned on the streets, which I saw one just this morning, no license plates, been sitting there for a long time. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to get on the citizen immediately, but I think that's one reason where our code enforcement people have done a good job. But, you know, that requires responsibility on each of us as citizens as well, to pick up the trash, to teach our young people that it's important that we do those type things. That's why we have a cleanup on the east side, where several churches and several groups are involved every spring, where we go around and do it, but it's something that we have to do all the time, and it's our responsibility to do it, whether it's Clean Up, Weir's Creek, or whatever it might be. So, you know, it's critical that we all participate in it, and certainly when it comes to the housing issue, particularly houses in some areas like Capitol Avenue or whatever, you know, code enforcement's important, but code enforcement's important for life safety issues. And when you get into some other issues, and sometimes there has to be that so-called gray area where you have to give people a little break so that they will want to invest in some of these structures, and they will want to put them back.
Okay, all right. So let's go to our next question. So Mark, we'll start with you. How can the city help address the issue of affordable housing? We've mentioned it in a couple answers, so how can the city help address the issue of affordable housing, especially affordable rental housing?
Well, you know, one problem that we have as well there is the absentee landlord, and we've got an awful lot of those. And of course, some of them keep their property up, and some of them don't. So there again, the issue of affordable housing, it starts with the code enforcement, first of all, and then we have to bring various groups together, the city officials, various entities and groups within the city of Jefferson, so we can decide, okay, how are we going to get this accomplished? Is it going to be necessary that we have some kind of a tax structure set up so that we can build housing? For example, over here at Dooley Towers, it's really getting old now, it's getting outdated. That type of construction is no longer a feasible and acceptable method of construction to meet the needs of people. So we're going to have to address that. We can't just say people should go on their own. Same thing's true with what we see with individuals that are homeless. And it's really surprising what some people from the Salvation Army, some members that were in my Lions Club several years ago, they came forth and did a presentation, and they were members of our Lions Club, and they said, you would really be surprised the number of people that have no home in the city of Jefferson and where they're living. Well, we have to be responsible for those people, because we don't know their circumstances and what put them there. And so I think that things like that are important. I think Habitat has done a wonderful job in this city, and I think it should continue to do so. But there again, it's people that care enough at all different levels, in the various trades and things like that, as well as people that have the funding to support Habitat and those things. So there's a number of different possibilities there, but it's certainly something that we should not ignore.
Okay, very good. Alicia, same question.
Well, with my work with Building Community Bridges, I've noticed that a lot of affordable housing seems to only be in or on the east side of part of town. There is affordable housing on the west end of town, but are those landlords going to rent to low-income people? Do they want low-income people in their neighborhoods? And that seems to be the biggest issue with affordable housing. We have got to spread affordable housing across Jeff City, not just put these people, low-income people, these homeless people, these people that have issues with housing all in one area. And that's also the reason why it seems like the crime is all in one area. And so we need to be able to make our city a little more diverse when it comes to affordable housing. Also, like Mark was speaking on Dooley Towers, we also have the housing projects on Elm Street and over off of Southwest Boulevard area. Those buildings still don't have central air, and they're old. So when you get affordable housing, is it going to be adequate for what you need? Is this all that we have to offer our citizens? So with all the blighted areas within the east side of the community, we need to, one, make sure that investors aren't coming in and buying up these properties and turning them into luxury houses, the luxury condos, because that's not what we need. We need a median where people can have affordable housing, and it can be mixed, so it's not just all wealthy people in this area and low-income people in this area, because that's not right, bottom line, it's not right. We can make these changes easily, because we have all the resources here, it's just bringing the people to the table. The partnerships with Habitat for Humanity, partnership with the Housing Authority on these projects, those people need to be at the table as well, because they work in those divisions and they understand how those things are moving. I believe that all these things are possible, and it's not going to happen overnight, it may happen in the next five or 10 years, but it's all possible, working together.
Okay, all right. Next question, Alicia, we'll start with you. Came from a reader. At least twice, the city has spent six figures to commission studies of public transportation. Each time, the need for more days and hours of operation has been stressed, yet has never been instituted. What improvements would you work toward for Jeff Tran?
Those exact things. If I have to go to work, and I am, I'm speaking from experience, if I'm a single mother of three children, and I have to get my children to school in the morning and go to work and pick them up from the bus and go back to work, or if I work an evening shift, I don't have transportation. The bus stops at 5:00, and you're stuck after that at the bus depot. We don't have bus services on the weekends, so now I can't work on the weekends. And so it really, if we want to improve the economic status of our city, we have to on all levels. And transportation is a big need for our community to extend it to the weekend hours, to the weekends in general, and later in the evening. I believe that if we look at our budget... I believe that if we um, look at our budget, there's possibilities to extend that. I would definitely push to extend for the weekend. I think that maybe um, pushing past five PM might be a stretch right now in Jefferson City, but I definitely think that we can include at least Saturday, um, so people can get back and forth to work.
All right, Mark, same question.
I think that in, in many ways, the transportation department has been responsive, uh, particularly like on some of the routes, for example, uh, the one that went out by the Cole County uh, Health Department. Uh, originally that stopped uh, down below the health department, so the people still had to walk up the hill. Well, they changed that route after we heard from citizens when the health department moved out there. So they changed the route so that the buses actually pull up into the lot now. I, I agree that certainly on the weekends would be an advantage for a lot of folks, uh, very definitely. Um, I'm not exactly sure how we address all the issues with transportation because transportation traditionally in almost all cities, including the city of Jefferson, it's a losing proposition. So you, you, you can never figure that it's going to be a moneymaker for you. That's not the purpose of it. And it will not be a moneymaker, but fortunately, we are able to get some funding from the federal government. Now, we're getting into issues now where we're being more concerned about the age of our uh, buses themselves. Uh, the actual age and, and the safety standards that are met. So we're going to have to address that as well. But, but certainly in a city, uh, city the size of Jefferson City, even though we're not that large in population, this city is really spread out. And so we have to be able to accommodate individuals uh, uh, at all levels, particularly senior citizens uh, that may not have transportation means, they may not be able to afford uh, other forms of transportation. So we have to be able to do that and uh, we're just going to have to work through it somewhere.
All right, next question. Um, reader asks, in perception and in practice, Lincoln University and Jefferson City's relationship is too often focused on division or a disconnection. How can the council foster a better connection between the city and LU? Mark, we'll start with you.
I think that there's been a lot of progress in that, that area. I, I originally went to Lincoln University before I uh, transferred and changed my major. Um, but I think that uh, uh, certainly there's a need to recognize uh, growth for Lincoln University. Lincoln University is a very critical, uh, a very critical component in the history and in the structure of the city of Jefferson. Uh, it's, it's very, very critical. And uh, I, I believe that one thing that we can do is that uh, when they have job fairs and uh, career fairs and things like that, I think that uh, sometimes I've heard that Lincoln is not represented at some of those, whereas uh, other colleges and universities around the state of Missouri are. So I think it's, it would be great if Lincoln could participate more. Uh, we certainly have the representative, the student representative that comes to the city council meetings and that's great, but I'd like to see us actually be able to sit down uh, as council people, uh, and particularly council people from the, from the fifth ward and others as well. Uh, obviously we can't meet more than five at a time so that we wouldn't be in any violation there. But I think we need to sit down monthly or, or uh, every two months or whatever and sit down and discuss some of these issues. How can we work together? I've had a lot of conversations with Carlos Graham. I've had conversations with Gary Hill. Uh, Gary was one of my students when I was an adjunct instructor at Columbia College. And Gary's doing a lot right now to, to help Lincoln University with the, the criminal justice program, the academy that they've got. But Lincoln is such a wonderful, wonderful component. And if we sit down and discuss some of these things and have meetings on a, on a regular basis, I think we can do a lot to uh, to uh, move Lincoln forward in the community.
All right, same question, Alicia.
I, I couldn't agree more that the conversation needs to be had. The conversation needs to be had. Um, I feel like as a citizen of Jefferson City, um, a former student of Lincoln University and growing up here, I see the division. I see it loud and clear. And it needs, it takes representatives of the city to reach out to Lincoln University. If I come knocking on your door every day asking you to buy some cookies and every day you tell me no, then I'm going to stop knocking on your door. And I think we've come to a, a point like that with Lincoln. Um, there's been so many different times where the connection was trying to be made and it disconnected. And um, we basically have gone into the area um, where all the businesses were at and demolished them all, built a highway. So we're not showing as a city any love or support for the university. So I could see why the university stays to themselves. Um, as the executive director of Building Community Bridges, I've, I've partnered our commu- um, community resource with the university and we have interns that work with us. We have a community garden that's going in that's with the university's extension programs. We've worked with several people on writing grants for community gardens and better green spaces to improve the fifth ward and the areas that, that, that need it, that the, that the university can assist with. So I think that going to them and asking them to have that seat at the table and have a discussion on partnerships and different ways to uh, revamp the area that surrounds Lincoln University, make it more welcoming and um, more student oriented. We got to give back to them as well. We can't just ask them to give us resources to partner with us, to work with us. We have to be willing to give them the same thing. And so that conversation needs to happen.
All right. Um, Alicia, next question. How would you rate the city's response to the pandemic? What did we do well? What could we have done better?
I think that Jefferson City has done a great job responding to the pandemic. I, I really have absolutely no complaint. Um, I know that people were upset when um, the mayor decided to close down things or uh, the bars and all that kind of stuff. But honestly, when you follow the directions that are given, um, you really won't have that many issues. I personally um, have been around a lot of people that have been affected by COVID and I have not, um, I've not caught COVID. I wear my mask. I do what's required of me, wash my hands. And those things are, are noted everywhere. I, I like that the city has, um, even though a lot of people don't agree with wearing masks, they post on their businesses, the mask required. Um, when you go to places, you see masks there for people to take if they don't have any hand sanitizer. Um, I think they're doing great with responding to test sites and now vaccine sites. Uh, my mom, she's a, a senior citizen. Uh, she got a call last week to go get her test done in Eldon, Missouri. So if she didn't register with the health department here, she wouldn't have known that there was tests available in Eldon. So I think that they're doing a good, um, a very good job responding to the pandemic and making sure that all the needs are met at the citizens of Jefferson City.
All right, Mark, same question.
Um, I couldn't agree more. Uh, we've had an excellent response. Uh, you know, a lot of things, no matter what type mandate you might have, here again falls on an individual having responsibility and enough common sense to do the thing that's right. Particularly when medical professionals tell us, uh, based on their research or whatever, this is the right thing to do. Um, one of the things that I've noticed being on the council is we've had a really great relationship with the Cole County Health Department. And they have done a great job at every meeting that we've had virtually on the council of keeping us informed either by email or by uh, Kristy Campbell, the Cole County uh, Health Department Director, by keeping us informed what's going on. And as Alicia said, uh, with regard to the masks and things like that, we know it works because the actual flu, the basic flu that we normally see every year, those stats are down. So that proves that there again, in a different way, that, that masks and hand washing and social distancing and those things are definitely working. So I, I really don't have any complaints with, with the way our citizens have handled it and you know, you can't force people to do things, but you can certainly encourage them to do the right thing. And at least they can do the right thing for their own children and for, for their, their elderly parents or whatever. So uh, I think that we've done a, a pretty good job.
All right. Uh, next question comes from a reader, Mark, and we'll start with you. Um, the Parks Commission has approved the transfer of land making up East Miller Park to the Veterans Administration for the possible expansion of the National Veteran Cemetery. While Parks has identified other land for a new park in the area, the expansion plan has met some resistance in the neighborhood. What are your feelings on the cemetery expansion plan?
I was involved in some of the uh, early talks with regard to the uh, the extension and I've been a big supporter for years and I'm council liaison with the, with regard to the uh, cemeteries up on McCarty Street. Um, you know, there's a mixed issue there. First of all, it's easy to say, okay, there's going to be this transfer, but the first thing you have to do is the, the ultimate decision has to come from the Veterans Administration. And the Veterans Administration has very strict guidelines of what they require. And so as of yet, there has not been a determination made because uh, the Veterans Administration requires a number of acres uh, before uh, there could be uh, a, a national cemetery or cemetery or extension thereof. That little park plays a, an important role. Uh, there have been some issues down there. Uh, of course, now we have the uh, we have the Fire Museum. When the Fire Museum was getting ready to open, I went down and, and picked up a lot of trash and that varied from all kinds of things, from liquor bottles and everything else. But there again, uh, the area is getting better. Uh, I think that all of our parks are important. We've done an awful lot in a number of areas to, to improve our parks, Community Park and several others. But that little park down there, um, I'm not sure that, that that little sliver of land is, is what's really needed for regard to the national cemetery. And of course, we have uh, several other national cemeteries in Missouri, so I'm not sure the Veterans Administration is going to say that, hey, uh, we're going to uh, support you expanding the existing cemetery, which is two point five acres and started in eighteen sixty-seven. So there's a lot of issues that remain to be seen there. And uh, I don't think that necessarily we need to uh, uh, just say we're going to do away with that park and not have it because it, it, it does play a role with the people in that area and the young people that, that maybe need a place to go.
Okay, Alicia, same question.
Yeah, I grew up going to that park all the time. Um, I grew up on Lynn Street, which is a hop across the highway, which I did hop across the highway and tear my britches on the, on the fence going to that park. But that park means so much to me growing up because there was nothing else to do in the area besides go to the Blacktop. Um, that's what a lot of the people in the area called that park is the Blacktop. Um, they probably wouldn't know it by Miller Street Park if you called it that. Um, but there, if, if you take away the park, what is there for those people that are living in the housing units there to do? Where are they, where to, where are they supposed to take their children that's in the area, that's right there in the community, um, to go play and things like that? Um, I don't believe that the, the, the park is pillar amongst the black community of Jefferson City. So if you take that park away from that community, the community which I am a member of, what is that saying as a city? You took the park, um, you put up the wall, you tried to cover us up. Um, it's time to unite and be diverse here, people. It's, it's not time to cause any more confusion. Um, we don't have that here. I've grown up here. Yes, I've seen systemic racism. I'm not going to lie. Yes, I've, yes, I've been profiled, but overall, growing up in Jefferson City has been very peaceful. Um, there is not a lot of crime. There's not a lot of um, racial inadequacies. So taking that park would definitely uproar the community. Um, because that's, that's, that's our place to go. That's our thing to do. And so I don't believe that it should be moved, um, if there's other land that the veterans could build the memorial um, cemetery. I believe we should look into finding other resources for that.
Okay, so I'm going to circle back to both of you and give you thirty seconds. Let me, let me say this. I mean, my recollection is that the Parks Commission has allocated a couple of their spots as a alternate site for a park in that neighborhood. Um, and so let's, let's play a little speculation or theoretical here. Let's say the Veterans Administration says, yes, there's a net, there is a need to expand, expand that park. That cemetery, sorry, that cemetery into that park area. Do you believe, yes or no, that it, that it's wise for the city to expand that cemetery and move the park to another location that they have proposed? Mark, you can go first.
I really don't because I think that even though I'm in favor of, of something for the veteran cemetery, I don't think that that's an adequate space that would meet the need. And I do know that the, I do know that the city parks, uh, they are allocating uh, over a million dollars to upgrade that park. So I really don't think that, that that will, that would be a, a sufficient solution. Particularly with the street going through it.
Okay. Alicia, same question.
I totally agree and I didn't know um, there was funds being allocated because the park hasn't been touched in forever. Um, so you see all these different places going up. The thing with that park and it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. Meanwhile, you have um, all these kids with no park. Yes, Community Park is great. I love it. Um, but that's a, a walk, a little bit of a distance of a walk. So I think the park needs to stay and um, we need to find other places to move, um, to extend that cemetery. They're both historic places in the neighborhood. Um, so I wouldn't say we can figure it out. We'll have to figure it out because they're, they, they both are monumental. A lot of people go to that cemetery. A lot of people, um, that that Jeff City was built on is buried in that cemetery. And so any way that we can honor those people, um, the veterans, um, I agree with honoring them, but not in removal of the park.
Okay, all right. Next question, we'll start with Alicia. The city's finalizing a development agreement with a St. Louis-based group including Chesterfield Hotels to, to redevelop the approximately thirty-acre Missouri State Penitentiary property into a multi-use space centered around a hotel and a conference center. As a potential council member, what concerns do you have as the city negotiates this development contract?
My biggest concern is why are we contracting outside of um, home? That's my biggest concern. I believe that the redevelopment of it is a brilliant idea. Um, it'll bring a lot of tourism to Jefferson City. So they can skip on over from the penitentiary to the beautiful Capitol Avenue and view those historic buildings. Go on down to the fire, um, the fire department, the Fire Museum um, that Mark was speaking of, this opening soon by Miller Street Park. I think it would be a great asset to the community economically, but I think that we need to um, insource that. How are we, how are we building Jefferson City up and um, outsourcing the work? So that's what I would re, um, reevaluate if it left up to me was how could we get this done with the people of Jefferson City?
Okay, Mark, same question.
Having been extensively involved in the redevelopment process at, at the old MSB property, uh, one of, the reason that it was actually outsourced was that the proposals that were put forth through the uh, through the uh, community groups that got together. And that, of course, was the community partners, which was the state, uh, state representatives that were involved uh, and the county and, and the city. Uh, the criteria that was set forth for the, for the plan and the master plan, uh, the Chesterfield Arturists were the ones that actually met the criteria the best for redevelopment of what we, what we really wanted for that particular area. Now, the fact that, that this is an out, out, uh, an outstate group, uh, that still doesn't mean that you won't have a number of jobs that are brought here uh, over a period of time with construction and the various phases that will occur. And of course, we already have one new hotel there, but we actually know that we've lost substantial uh, conferences. We've lost uh, some of the state track know that we've lost substantial conferences. We've lost some of the state track meets and things like that that bring quite a bit of money into our community. And it's simply because individuals want to stay where the event's actually happening. They don't want to have to go to Columbia and get rooms whenever all the rooms are filled up here locally. And we've seen that happen any number of times. So as I've said earlier, tourism is extremely important. Jefferson City in the future, in my opinion, is going to be based a great deal, our future, on tourism. And it's absolutely critical. So I think that with the various things that are going to happen over there, hopefully we have a good year for the tours this year, which brings in a sizable amount of money when you can have $33,000 paid for tours. So having a hotel there on the site, even though it might be accomplished from an outside group, hotel group, I think it is very workable, and it certainly will bring jobs to Jefferson City, and it'll help boost our economy, because those people are going to have to stay here, they're going to have to eat here, so on and so forth. So it will help us.
All right. All right. Next question. Mark, we'll start with you. "The council's exploring two sales tax proposals for the August ballot. One would be an extension of the city's capital city, the city's capital sales tax, and the other is a public safety sales tax. Would you support either of these taxes? Why or why not?"
I actually support both of them. It's yet to be determined, and this will have to be done in work sessions with the other council members, whether both of those issues should certainly be on the ballot at that time with some of the other things that are coming up. But, you know, as I stated in some of my opening remarks, unfortunately, funding for the things that we need in our cities, whether it's our fire and police, infrastructure, and those types of things, that money has to come from the citizens and from the businesses that are here. So I support both of those taxes, and I'm willing to pay my share as well, just like we were for when we said we needed another high school here. You know, it requires all of us. And we don't know what the outcome will be, then we'll have to go based on what the voters, the determination would be.
Okay. Alicia, same question.
I also support both of the taxes. We have to realize that if we, people, I think that a lot of times as a citizen, you don't think about all the things that you declare, declare you want, you want, and what it costs. And so I've noticed in this election that a lot of people are pushing for these body cans. And yeah, you want body cans, but they have a price tag. You want better streets and roadways, but they have a price tag. So it's the way that we give back to get the things that we're needing in our city, and I support both of them.
All right. So let's go to our closing statements, and we'll start with Alicia. You'll have two minutes for your closing statement.
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to be talking with you guys today. Thank you, Mark, for coming on. It was my first time getting to meet Mr. Mark, and he's a beautiful person as well. So this race is going to be hard, but I appreciate it. I look forward to continuing on to April 6 election date. And if you vote for me, I would be more than honored to represent Jefferson City and the Fifth Ward as your councilwoman.
All right. Mark, your closing statement?
I appreciate the opportunity as well. And I always enjoy speaking with individuals. It's been a pleasure to meet Alicia and to share with her some of my thoughts. Whatever the outcome of the race might be, I'll continue to work for the city of Jefferson. I would like to sort of a final term and then work in some other capacities. I have no intention of, after this time of running for anything, because at 75, you know, your days are probably somewhat longer. But anyway, if Alicia would win, then I will support her, and I would look forward to working with her. But, you know, we'll see what happens April 6. And one thing I encourage all of our citizens to do is that it is our responsibility for all of us to vote. And so people think, well, it doesn't make any difference at the local level. Yes, it does. It makes a difference. You have a voice. You should use your voice, and you can certainly do that by registering to vote and voting. That's the most critical issue. So thank you very much.
I want to thank the candidates for appearing in today's forum. Now through the April 6 election, we'll be accepting questions for these candidates and other candidates who are on the Jefferson City ballot. Those questions can be emailed to vote@newstrubune.com. In the ensuing three weeks, we'll be publishing answers to those reader questions as well as stories on all of the contested races on the Jefferson City ballot. Our coverage will culminate with a reader's guide on Sunday, April 4. Our goal through these forums, stories, and question-and-answer columns is to help you, the voter, make an informed decision on April 6. We encourage you to take advantage of these resources, share them with your friends and family, and then get out and vote. Again, candidates, thank you for spending time with us today.
Thank you, Gary.